Good morning and thank you for attending. Got a big crowd here today. Next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, November 9th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center here at 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please sign us to turn off your cell phones. Consent to Jenna. The Minutes of the Board of Supervisors' Regular Meeting Held Friday, October 12th, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
Show them what.
Second.
Board comment? Public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Stegal?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
Action Agenda Resolution Number 2018-10/26-43. A resolution of the Southern Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve agreement with Polston Engineering for Architectural Services related to the remodeling of the clubhouse Lenai. Do I have a motion to approve?
Show them what.
Second.
Okay. Tanya, are you going to present?
Yeah, I'd like to say just a few things. Attached for your consideration, Supervisors, is a proposal from Architect Michael Griffith. The professional services would be for the design and construction drawings of the Lenai expansion and enclosure for $18,590. The services will include all architectural and engineering design drawing, as I mentioned, electrical and mechanical. It will include all site visits related to the construction and include interior finished schedule and materials with coordination with the owner, which would be the district, and include bid reviews and qualified bidders and field observations.
Good. Thank you. Board comment?
The timeline fits in our plan, right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Griffith is able to start next week on the design.
And finish it by when?
He said he could finish it by the end of November, maybe the first week of December. He's actually supposed to be here at the meeting, but I think he's over at the district office right now. I don't know if we need to make a call. I don't know if he's still over there. I think he went to their own building, but he is supposed to attend the meeting. We can try to get him here so you all can ask him questions, maybe towards the end or if we need him beforehand, if you need to make a decision.
I mean, I'll pull the board for that. Does the board have any questions that they wanted to ask? Or we might be able to... If we don't have any questions, it's no sense in tying up his time.
I just... Before we get too far, I think we probably ought to sit down with the guy one-on-one or whatever, and if we have any ideas as to how things ought to look before he takes what Schultz did and runs with it.
He is planning on being here Monday to meet with whoever he needs to over at the clubhouse. That way he can go over it. I know there's a number of people that have already been working on it.
Working on?
Well, working on with the other architectural firm on what they want done at the clubhouse for the Lenai enclosure.
And who was that?
I assumed it was between Tanya and... Didn't one of the board members get...
...do what I designed?
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah, he'll be ready to meet next week to go over all the...
Okay. Are we not going to go with proposal design of, I think it was number two, or B, option B? Are we looking to change that?
It seems to me that we might should consider having the ability to divide that area into smaller meeting room so that if there is a need for a 20, 30-person meeting, we could accommodate that in a private setting. If we can accommodate it, if we can't, then that's fine, too. We can just go with proposal two. But if we can do it up front, it doesn't cost us anything at this point. If we build it and then we decide we need it, then it costs us.
I am confused now because we voted on it, right? We're done with it.
Option B.
With concept.
Right.
So are we changing it?
We'd have to amend the resolution, wouldn't we?
I mean, if we're going to change it, that would change the price and everything else. So I assume we'd have to go through the whole process again. Is that not correct?
The board did approve option B, which was presented by Schultz. I think what Supervisor Stegal is saying is on the interior work, it was mentioned to me yesterday that it would be nice to have a... Cliff and I had this discussion about having a meeting space within that area where the doors can be closed and then the doors can be opened up and kept open during normal dining hours and events.
We're talking to Lenai here?
Yeah.
Sir?
We're talking about the Lenai, having a meeting space on the Lenai?
It's a meeting space within the building structure. So if we had some sort of a door system to where...
Wait a minute. Why? I'm sorry. You have that whole facility in there where there's meetings all the time. Why are we going to have a meeting facility on the Lenai?
Cliff and I just had this conversation yesterday. So Cliff, did you want to expand on...
Maybe Cliff, you can come up and explain to us what your thought process is on this so we could get a little better understanding because I know it's a surprise to me. I don't know if it's a surprise to anybody else.
Mr. Griffith, well, he's going to design option B, but if there is a need, like Dan said, to look at having a meeting space, he can add an option to that design for a space that could be enclosed just for meetings, maybe on the west end, possibly. I don't know.
Yes, really, just what Tanya said, really, to try and work a small meeting space within the guidelines that's already approved. There's been so much feedback, especially from the folks at the hospital, for a group that we can fit a group of 30 or 40 people. And I mean, I think we might be able to do it for almost no cost or maybe some sliding glass doors. I just wanted to, before we got any further, I just wanted to make sure that we talked to him about just the possibility. It's all right now. It's just talk, okay?
No. Am I okay with it? I mean, we voted on something and, you know, if that's... If it's going to change, then we start from scratch, as far as I'm concerned. You have that whole facility, the whole 30 people, 50 people, 100 people. Why are we incorporating it into an expansion of the Lenai? I don't know.
As I understood it, this was just another option so that if it doesn't cost a significant amount, it doesn't make sense not to have it where it's more flexible than just wide open.
Just trying to add some flexibility. That's all.
I don't care either way.
I think it's good to leave your options open to have some different alternatives, but we started on this road two years ago from a kitchen expansion or renovation to a relatively new building structure for the kitchen. It was based on some things dealing with safety and menus and whatnot. We reexamined it and looked at it and said, "Well, really, we have an issue with possibly the seating." So we looked at an expansion of the Lenai recently, and now we're looking at potentially breakout rooms. And I get it if it's what Dan said, if it doesn't really cost us anything, it's not a bad thing to have that option. But I also think that there's a potential that instead of it being a clubhouse for the members of the golfing community, it now becomes an outside meeting rooms and banquets for Sebring or elsewhere. That's the only thing. Now, if that's part of your business plan to drive revenue in the clubhouse area, then when you come up with your business plan, which I know we've talked about, you're working on, I would suspect that that would be part of your business plan to say, "Gee, I think we could maybe get some... capture some revenue here by doing that." Then it would justify it, maybe. At least in my mind, it might. That's just my thoughts. But, you know, we keep changing direction on this thing.
I personally don't think closing off part of the Lenai is the right thing to do for a meeting. I mean, I thought we were expanding the Lenai for the people, like the golfers who come in on Wednesdays, you know, when we have that big onslaught of people and there's nowhere for them to go and, you know, you don't want to take away from the restaurant tables. And quite frankly, I don't even know how you section off the Lenai to where it makes any sense because we are taking the walls down and going out to where the shades are, correct?
Correct.
So if we're going to go out to where the shades are, how are you going to section off part of that?
It would be through some sort of a door system. So 95% of the time, it would all be open for open seating. It was just discussed yesterday. I mean, in the way, if there was going to be a meeting, you could actually slide the doors out and have an enclosed space for a meeting. It's definitely possible. It was just...
I think it's important to have that discussion, but to have a meeting now talking about, you know, getting architectural drawings and we just find out about it right now without any opportunity to kind of think it through. You want us to make these decisions in a couple of minutes, and I'm not so sure that that's the approach that we want to take. I'm speaking once again for myself. I can't speak for the board. I'm only one person, but...
Is this all part of the $18,000? He wants to charge us $18,590 or is it going to cost more?
I haven't talked to Mr. Griffith about this.
Well, he's right here.
This would be an option. So option B that was approved by the board is going to be designed and it's going to be designed with construction drawings. What he could possibly do is look at it and say, is there... We could ask him, is there any possibility that we could create a space that can be opened up 95% of the time and then for a meeting space, you know, enclose it with some sort of a door system?
You know, and I've...
It's just an option.
I would think we'd be better off looking at the whole interior of the clubhouse because it looks like crap than addressing that. I mean, I asked you this, and I don't know the answer. Maybe I'll get the answer today. Is if when we put the expansion on the Lenai, when you put lighting up, what is it to match? Are we going to buy lighting exactly like we have in the bar area, for lack of a better term? Or are we going to... I mean, what are we doing? The same thing with the furniture. The furniture that Cliff buys for that area is going to be incorporated as part of the bar area now as the furniture. That issue's never been addressed. You know, I know he has $15,000. We talked about this in the budget, but I don't know. I mean, it sounds like we're going to fix a little corner there and leave the rest of it looking like hell. Okay.
I kind of get tired.
Believe me, I'm very sorry I brought the subject up and it will never happen again.
Mr. Griffith, do you mind introducing yourself to the board and just...
Go ahead.
Thank you.
And good morning and my condolences for being a tad late. My name is Michael Griffith. I'm a local architect registered in the state of Florida. And thank you. Is there something that you need to know more about me? I'm a Virginia Tech graduate, been registered as an architect for almost 40 years, relocated to central Florida here in Sebring from Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, where I just closed up my office and reopened the office here locally to provide continued professional services to individuals and boards like you. My experience has been doing... I'm mostly a commercial architect, although I do a little bit of everything, including boat docks and garages. But most of my work is commercial. Currently, I am doing some items here in the Sebring area to include your new hotel, the Hilton True Hotel, on the lake and have done various projects in and around the central Florida area because my parents retired here in Sebring from Pennsylvania back in the '70s. And so I've been visiting with them and have done various architectural work for developers and builders here in this area to include the Ashley Oaks Retirement Buildings, to include Plaza, the Shopping Center, and some various other small individual projects. So I'm familiar with the area somewhat, although I've just been here since October last year. That's it briefly on me. Any particular questions that the board may want to ask of me?
Have you been in any conversations about the separation?
Yes, indeed, I have. My affiliation with Polston Engineering has acquainted me with what the board is asking and along with the membership in regards to the Lenai enclosure and/or renovations. Yes.
Okay, but now we're talking about creating the ability to separate part of that for a meeting room?
Did they tell you about that?
That's just come up. Have you been in that conversation?
No, this just came up yesterday. I apologize. I have not talked to you about that. It was a conversation between Cliff and I.
No.
No.
Okay, here's my position. We agreed as a board to offer the previous architect $20,000 to do our drawings, and this gentleman has quoted our drawings at $18,500. If we can get the additional architectural work done for what we're talking about and stay under that pre-approved $20,000 number, we'd be foolish not to do it just to have an option A to ask the construction people to be able to quote on. I mean, that's what I would prefer to see done, but that's my opinion.
Were you just saying go with the original?
No, I'm saying go ahead and include what we're talking about if we can do it for the amount of money we had agreed to spend on the previous architect's work. So if for an additional $1,500 he can do that, $1,500 more or less, I think it'd be foolish not to go ahead and do it. And then we can entertain the option when we know what the cost of the option actually is, but we can't get a cost on the option unless he includes it in the drawings.
Right. My only issue was I would like the ability to talk to him about it. It may not be possible. It may not be prudent. It just seems to me that if we are more flexible, then we have an additional use for the building. That's all I was trying to get to.
And I don't disagree with that. Again, I think it's going to be cost-driven.
I voted for option B. If there's anything different, I'll change my vote. I mean, this is ridiculous. No offense, Mr. ...
Okay. We have a resolution in front of us for architectural work to be done based on the Lenai as was presented in option B. Is that a true statement?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And that's what he based his estimate on, option B.
That's correct.
So we would have to... Correct me if I'm wrong once again. We would have to amend this if we decided to have him do the drawings for the potential closing in or breakout rooms. Is that not true?
I don't necessarily have to change the contract because there's going to be a meeting next week, if I understand correctly. There's going to be a meeting at the facility.
A site meeting?
A site meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. So that could be discussed then because the contract includes design work. And so option B is already designed. Now, we know what option B is, and so the site meeting, if they want to talk about any potential modifications, as long as we're within the $18,580 or $590, whatever the dollar amount is, it's still... It doesn't have to be... We wouldn't have to change this contract if that was to be considered as an option.
Okay. That's what... I mean, I think Supervisor Branson was saying if we can get this design incorporated in this $18,500, then it would make perfect sense to review it or go in that direction if it's not costing us any additional. And then when we RFP it, we either stay with or without that breakout room. If that's the case...
That's my idea. And I was... We were just going to ask the question, is it possible... So you're going to have two options, like you said, if that's the route the board wants to take. You could have two options.
But at the same token, it's not going to change his pricing, and I don't know that he's agreed to doing those architectural services without increasing the price.
Well, yeah, and that could be discussed at the site meeting, and the site meeting may reveal it can be done.
Well, the site meeting isn't a public meeting, though.
So are we kidding ourselves? We really think... It'd be great if he could do the drawings for the price that we're talking about, but we don't think that that's going to increase the cost of the project? Are we kidding? I mean, don't we think...
We know it's going to cost more.
It's going to cost more. We know it's going to cost more money.
But if we have it bid with and without that option, we still have the ability to decide.
I mean, if they can do it for the budgeted amount, including that option, we may want to say, "Yeah, let's go ahead." If that option adds $15,000, it may not make any sense. So I guess my preference would be that we approve this as it's written and look at what it would take to get the additional architectural work done to create that potential breakout room.
As a separate item?
Well, if it's feasible, then it can be done as a change order. And if it's not feasible, then we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, I know that this supposedly came up sometime yesterday. Where did it come up? Between, lie in between? Can somebody help me understand this?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
What... I'm sorry because of my throw. What prompted this conversation to happen yesterday, the day before this meeting?
I was talking to Cliff, and he's mentioned casually that we had the ability to have... If we had a private area that could be made private, then we had an opportunity to get additional business from the hospital, could use 20, 30 people for lunch and a meeting. So it seems to me that if we're looking for a way to increase the volume in the restaurant, if we're turning away business like that, we'd be kind of dumb not to at least take a look at it. And my only comment was I'd like the ability for us to just, or me, myself, or Cliff, or somebody, to talk to the architect and say, "Is this possible? And if so, what would it do to the cost?" That's all. It may be something we can't do. It may be something we don't want to do. I don't know. But when you're sitting in this meeting making decisions based on zero information, you're going to make the wrong one. That's all I'm trying to say.
And I totally agree with you. I think it could potentially be a very, very good idea. The only thing I'm having a problem with is I find out about it the morning of a meeting.
Well, I can't talk to you because of the sunshine law. And I didn't say we should do it or not do it. I said I would like the ability to talk to him about it, just to see. And if you don't want to do it, whatever. Like I said, I'm sorry I brought it up.
There's absolutely no cost in having a conversation. So again, why don't we vote on this motion as it's written, have the ensuing conversation, and if the decision is to be made on some additional cost, bring it back as an amendment next meeting. But it doesn't stop the progress from...
Right.
Doesn't stop him from starting his work.
Would it have to come back to the board if it was like a $1,500 architectural change?
It would just come back as a change order.
It would go as a change order.
Which would have to be voted on.
She has the money to discretionary to say...
I already have the budget for it, so...
Yeah, you have the budget to do that.
But I would definitely communicate it to you somehow. I mean, we can talk through that. Let me have a conversation with Mr. Griffith about is there any options for us on a separate meeting space, and then we'll go from there. I'll let you know what transpires from that. And if we do need to bring a change order back, we'll certainly do so at the next meeting.
I think that's the right thing to do.
But I do have the ability to make change orders without going to the board if it's less than $10,000.
Right. That's my point.
That is correct. But I would definitely, you know, apprise the board of what our conversations are.
Okay.
So what am I voting on?
You're voting on the resolutions as it exists today at $18,590, correct?
To draw B.
To draw up B.
To draw B, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. We're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Public comment?
My pleasure. Good luck.
Thank you.
Tom Costley, resident. Is this contract going to be between the architect and the district or between the architect and the engineer?
It's between the architect and the engineer.
So we're buying architectural services from our engineer?
Correct.
Correct. And is our engineer going to be marking that work up?
No.
No. Simply a pass-through. The responsibility, though, is from between the architect and the engineer, but not between the architect and the district?
Or if I may respond, the architect is providing...
Can you go to the mic, please? Thank you.
My apologies. And thank you for asking the question. The architect has employed a structural engineer, if indeed there is any structural that I foresee would be required to complete this project. So that would be included in my services.
Question came up a while back with regard to drawings. Has the district been able to provide the architect with drawings of the building that he'll be working with on this project? So they have been found. The word had gone out that we couldn't find them. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any further public comment?
Good morning. Bill Norcross, resident. Dan, I think you were interested in having a separate room for a meeting room like they have down at the hotel down by the Jackson, Lake Jackson.
In Ingle Lakes.
Right. You're interested in having a separate area for people coming in? I'm trying to understand what kind of thing you do.
I'm interested in having a multi-use facility that can be open if we need it or could possibly be closed if we need it, but only if it makes sense economically.
I agree. I agree that could be an option. I think you always want to have your options open and to have the architect at least as a drive-by to look at it if it's viable, it can be done, because really, we don't know of that opening and expansion. And Ray was correct that the dining room really needs upgrade, painting, maybe different lighting and the whole thing. So in the meantime, that dining room has been used functionally for outside people, for separate parties and things like that. So keep that in mind that by upgrading the restaurant, that the dining room side that may resolve that problem that you initiated. Thank you.
Any other further public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegal?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is discussion of global golf. There's been some changes to the global golf. Did you want to cover that?
Yes, sir. Does the board wish to... You want me to read the bullet points to go down the different comments and the different changes? Do you want me to take a few minutes and do that?
You can do that.
Okay.
I've already read them, so I don't know if the others want you to go through them.
Okay.
You guys want...
No, I'm good.
I'm good with them. I've read them all.
Okay.
Ray?
My brother.
Okay. You'll feel comfortable with them?
I don't... I can't tell... I don't, I can't take issue with anything they're saying, but one of the reasons that I can't is, I don't know what their data is, or how it was presented to them, or where it came from. I would like to see some data on, particularly on the outside play piece, relative to how many people pay the full rate, how many people pay, we have seven or eight rates, I think, if you really look at it. How many pay the resident rate? How many pay the Tanglewood rate? How many pay the hotel rate? How many pay the players' card rate? And then I'd also like to know if the software will permit, and I know the software can, can print out on a line-by-line basis what everybody pays that goes through the Pro Shop. I would think that data could be sorted and compiled so that we would have monthly numbers, year-to-date numbers, those kinds of things. And maybe a report from last year telling us what, because what we can't do is measure the effect of rate increases, rate decreases, negotiated rates. We don't, we don't know what it means. I was very pleasantly surprised last year to find out how many people were paying the full off-the-street rate. It was a much higher number than I thought it would be. But I'd like to know whether we have more room, whether we're at our peak. Ideally, if we could get seventy dollars around instead of sixty, we need to start thinking in terms of how to get to that over the next year, two years, three years, whatever. Because all of this is gonna be about revenue enhancement, and that's gonna be the lifeblood of our future. So Cliff, I'm asking you, I guess, to look into what kinda data we can pull from your system? And then if we could get, say, a report once a month that gave us the monthly numbers and the year-to-date numbers, and maybe for comparison purposes, have last year's totals. So at the end of the busy season, we can say, this two-dollar increase was a good move. We got just as much play as we got last year, just as many players. And we may have room for another two dollars next year, or three dollars next year.
I can, I can.
Yeah. I would like to see that, and I'd like to see it sooner rather than later, so. That's my one biggest question on what I'm reading.
Me? I do have, I guess, a question. On, the comments are on page twelve, which I guess is the last page of the suggestions that we got. I guess, Ariel, I just wanna know, are we, or can I have at the next meeting, 'cause this is unfair to drop this on you, an update on where you think we are as far as working on the website?
Yes.
You know, what, give us, if you can even give us a time and action calendar on how you think it's gonna play itself out, that would be great. So I'm very interested in that.
Yeah, let's not be website-specific, if you will. Let's talk about all the other pieces that have been discussed. I mean, I don't expect you to have everything done that's been thrown at you, but it would be nice to know where the progress is and where the roadblocks are and.
You bet.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Public comment?
On this global golf, I mean, I saw the line five, I believe, something about find a way to reach larger metropolitan areas is a tremendous factor. I'll give you a quick example of what happened yesterday. We were out playing golf, and there's been a group, I can't remember, someplace, South Florida. It could be Naples, it could be, it could be Fort Myers, or it could be the other side. But anyhow, the gentleman, I asked him how, how things were going. He said, very, very good. And I mentioned a fact that because our golf course, they had a meeting on the putting green of about twenty odd, maybe thirty people. And they were discussing about how the playing conditions, and should we roll the ball over, and things like that. So I briefly, I said, listen, you guys are gonna enjoy this golf course, and you won't have to roll the ball over. We got into a little conversation about where you're from and, and the whole issue of where this guy happened to be coming from. And he says, he said, man, I tell ya, the traffic down south is so bad, I cannot wait to leave. And I said, well, there's a nice place to come to. You've got thirty-six holes of golf, and I think you're gonna enjoy it. So under global golf, if they can reach these people, either going to the hotels and put their brochures out, making some kinda arrangements, and, and having a area represent, a representation of the golf courses, their facilities. I know it's done, it's done online, but it hasn't been, I don't think it has been very effective. So I think they can make an effective presentation, and it's really needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Any further public comment? Okay. Add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports. Michael? Staff report?
The watch orders that we've been doing are, are starting to, oh, is that better?
Yes.
The watch orders we've been doing are starting to come down a lot now. Now, people are coming back. We really had too many problems with the watch orders this year. We didn't have any break-ins or anything. And this is the time of year that, that I would tell you this. So they've really worked, worked real well for us this year, and I want to continue for next year. The dog park, I've been getting a lot of good feedback about our dog park. The people that have come back are very happy with it, which I'm glad to hear. I was a little nervous that, you know, you know, when they come back, you know. But besides that, everything else, I'm pretty quiet. Projects, projects, we're working on a project over here in the corner. I'm sure all of you have seen it. So that should be finished up, hopefully, the end of the day. In back of Hornix, and Drew and I will be working on drainage projects for the whole community, so.
You talking about that, those forces, those new condos that they built? You're doing work behind that, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's Sunlake property.
That's on what?
That's Sunlake property that we're cleaning up.
Yeah, what exactly, you know, I saw the email, but what exactly are we doing in that corner? I mean, all of a sudden, there's this big opening in.
Well, in the past, in the past, there was a lot of dumping through the years before, before us, the golf course used to dump all the brush and debris in there, and it was a mess. We actually found an old bike in there that was thrown, thrown in a pile. So we're cleaning it all up to make it look, as you ride by, to make it look like.
So that's just gonna be a big hole when you're done? I mean, you have, on the corner, you got wood.
No, 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 that's drainage. That's drainage. The drainage will be running through there. We, we, we remove trees for the drainage.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to visualize how it's gonna look better.
Well, you don't have all that brush, you don't have, you know.
I mean, but in the corner, you have tall trees, you know, shrubs, whatever. And then all of a sudden, you have this twenty-five-foot opening.
Well, we clean that up. I mean, we're not done right, you know.
I mean, but what is it gonna, eventually, it's gonna.
Well, the drainage will be running in the back of Hornix, Hornix buildings, and then, and then we'll be keeping that clean. So it's not all grown in and so.
Will that be a culvert going in there for the drainage? What's the drainage?
Well, it'll be a ditch.
Swale.
It'll be a swale?
Yeah.
So you'll go in there and build out swales to drain?
Right, so we went in there. We, you know, we tried to do a lot of work in-house to save money.
Yep.
So that's why we went in there.
Okay.
Okay?
Mike, I got a question on, I don't know if it's for you or Omar, but it seems to be like a lot of our local contractors are just setting on their houses. Is there, is there anything we can do, particularly that one that's been there two years on Granada? Do we talk to them, or?
Yeah, well, we talked to him. He's actually disappeared. I haven't seen him in three months. Here, let Omar talk about that. He can.
So that's something that, you know, David and I are gonna have to have a conversation. In our permit, we do have a provision that stipulates any construction has to start within ninety-day period, and it has to terminate, be complete, within three hundred and sixty-five days. What our contract permit does not state is what the consequence or fine is if that does not occur. So that's something that we may bring back to the board as imposing some sort of penalty per day once the three sixty-five, or maybe minimizing the three sixty-five to another, you know, another period in time. So we do have a stipulation. Something else that we're looking into is getting more involved at county. I don't know if county has any provisions as to a certain timeframe where they must be completed once they commence.
Okay, well, just so, just so you guys are, 'cause it's, it's getting, I mean, I go by there and almost get sick every day I go by it. And it's, and it's not only them, there's a house on, or duplex on Matanza that's been a year and a half.
Right.
I mean, I, and it's gonna look beautiful, but I don't know what's on these.
Yeah, we're trying to push them, once again, some of our provisions, such as the water bill, we only charge for water for the first six months, and then once the six months is up, we start charging for sewer right away, even though they're not using that. So we try and impose penalties and fees and services charges along the way to try and encourage.
Okay, well, just so you guys are.
Completed.
You know, 'cause I have a lot of people say stuff to me all the time, and it just, if we don't have answers, then we say, hey, we're working on it, or, but, and that guy that you said disappeared, he doesn't even mow his yard. I mean, I did notice yesterday that one half of it's mowed.
Right.
But this guy is just.
Yeah, for sure.
Just frustrating.
Like I said, we will be bringing back the permit process. We need to look at it a little bit more and impose some penalties and kinda set some guidelines as to what we wanna implement as far as construction process and some options for the district to try and impose, for them to finish completion.
Just, just so I understand, I think I heard you, but maybe some clarification would be helpful. So we have a permitting process that gives a, an end date primarily three hundred and sixty-five days?
Correct.
But we have no resolution if they don't, in other words, we, we said you have to do this within three hundred and sixty-five days, and we never said, and if you don't, this is what's going to happen?
Correct. The current permits don't have any fee structure or penalty or.
So what they have good is that? I'm just trying to understand. What, what good would that be? You could say ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, two years, three years, if there's no recourse.
Right. Yeah, like I said, our permits, I believe the last time they were revised were in two thousand and six. So it's something, once again, it hasn't been reviewed often, it needs to be addressed. We have been researching that. We just need to find out what our legal, what legal position we can take as far as, we can't start foreclosure, I don't believe, because they're not delinquent. But once again, if we can impose a penalty, then that may encourage them to speed up the process.
Now, are they paying their assessments?
Correct, they are current with their assessments.
They are current with the assessment.
That's one of those processes that they have to be current in order to pull a permit with the district.
But now, are they current?
Well, they'll receive their bill for twenty eighteen, it just went out.
Okay.
So they may become delinquent in March, after March thirty-first, and then we can assess it at that point, but at the current moment, they are current.
Thank you very much.
And, and too, I just wanna add, Mike, I've just tickled the death on that corner. It just looks so much better, and I know it's gonna look a lot better, but it's quite a mess there, and.
When you, uh, when you're taking stuff and stuff back there, you know.
Yep.
And I know that, uh, Mike. Tanya and I have gone over it a few times, that you really, really pushed us to get it done, and it does look a hundred percent better. I mean, people actually stopped yesterday and said, finally, we've done it, so.
Yeah, I've got a lot of comments, even started yesterday.
And, you know, we have a few areas that are like that, that I'd like to start addressing, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Excuse me. Omar?
Yeah, just a quick update. Like I mentioned previously, assessment notices have gone out, so hopefully everyone's encouraged to pay their November discounted amount. We are finishing up our year in financials, those will be ready by November fifteenth, which is our deadline. So I'll be giving you guys an update at the November board meeting, as to where we fell at the end of the year, and our reserves and all that fun stuff. And we're also working on getting the budget books out by, in the next week.
Okay.
The formal budget book.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ariel?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a couple things for me as well. So I'm sure, or I hope all of you know that tonight is our Trick or Trot Five K and Kids' Monster Mile. We are, people are still registering this morning, I had two people register, so we are just shy of a hundred participants, so I'm, I'm very happy about that. Coffee and Conversations, the new kind of a social breakfast, I don't wanna call it a breakfast club, but social initiative where we're having businesses and organizations come in to speak to residents in the mornings. We are actually booked out with businesses through February, so we've gotten a great local response from community businesses and organizations on that. We have also extended that invitation to the residents of Fairway Pines, that if they have some residents that would like to come and join us for that, that we've welcomed them to do that as well. And starting Monday, we will start switching gears from Halloween and doing lots of Christmas focus.
You had, you had one of these coffee conversations prior already? Haven't you had one?
We have had two.
You had two? How is the attendance been?
There's some room for growth with, with both. Pretty low, but we're gonna keep pushing on with them. It's, the businesses that come in actually bring in the donuts in exchange for some time to speak to residents. So, you know, for us, there's no cost that's really being associated there, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I applaud your efforts.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I know that it'll grow, especially as some of our winter residents come back, so we're, we're gonna keep going.
Thank you very much. Cliff?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think everybody saw my membership update that I sent out to everybody. So we're really right on pace, kinda just as we planned. There was, what did we have, a two, two and a half percent increase, but we're pacing three and a half, four percent, so really quite good. Really happy with, with renewals. Very close to, kinda working with Omar, finishing September financials. There's just a few invoices left, and we're just about done, so we're real close. October, and really, November, too, is trending just extremely strong. Really, October is, you've seen how much activity we've really had at the club, and really, a lot of, a lot of groups from Inno Lakes, just a lot of people playing, playing the golf course and using the restaurant. So it's gonna be really probably one of the strongest Octobers we've had in several, several years. So, and really, November is kinda shaping up to be kinda the same way, so all really good news. The equipment lease, speak a little bit for Earl. The, it's just turned out to be a little bit more complicated, I think, than he had hoped as the bids, and Tanya, you might be able to help me a little bit, but as the bids have come in, they didn't include some of the trade-in values, and some of the warranties were a little bit odd, and he's trying to kind of make it so it's apples-to-apples comparisons and within our guidelines. And so we're hoping by the next meeting, we can have some type of resolution to give it to you by then, so. But it's just, for Earl, I think it's, you know, we still got the golf course to take care of, and it's just, it's turned into a little more complicated process than he had kinda hoped. Other than that, that's really it. You'll see a lot of, you know, I continue to strive to kind of add member value to kinda what we're doing at the club. You'll see, you know, at first, when we, when we first started talking about November events, we really didn't have as many outside events kinda booked when we, 'cause, you know, you know I'm trying to do calendars, you know, well in advance, and a month and six months out. Well, Mike ended up booking quite a bit in a short-term window, but you'll just see a lot of stuff, really, from members, whether it's tacos and tequila, or, or an appreciation guest night. We have, you know, the big Thanksgiving buffet coming up. There's five or six member appreciation type of events you'll see in, in November. That, that big, the mentalist, you know, one more, we have our very next, you know, big, big show coming up at the end of November, so a lot of big stuff planned.
I'm sorry, what was the last one you said?
It's a, it's a mentalist.
Oh, the mentalist.
The mentalist called Mark Stone.
The entertainment for Friday night.
Entertainment for Friday night, so already starting to get reservations for that. That'll, that'll roll out to the membership today, so, with all the advertising, so. That'll, that'll roll out to the membership today, so, with all the advertising, so...
Have you had any, uh, resistance to the pricing on the member, from the membership?
I have heard absolutely zero.
Okay, good.
I haven't heard one thing.
Excellent.
Just one comment, uh, the Member Social last Sunday?
Yes.
Was, uh, a really nice event, was well-attended. I assume we're gonna continue to do that once a month?
We're gonna, that's, it, it seems to grow every year, I mean, every year, every, it seems to grow every month, and, uh, it will very much continue, so...
Good, that's a nice, that's a nice event.
I think that's been, I think that's been really successful, actually.
Yeah. I don't know who thought of it, but it's a great idea.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks again. General counsel?
Uh, not a lot today. The demand letter for the Unit 12 letters is essentially finished, we're going to, because we're at the end of October, and with the new billing going out, we're going to make a revision so that it will include the numbers for the 2019 year, even though they're not due yet, we don't wanna just tell them, we don't, we don't wanna ignore the fact that they're going to have been billed and, you know, be outstanding, so we're gonna include that in the demand letter. Uh, talked to Supervisor Branson this morning, we're gonna have another meeting on code enforcement next week sometime, and, uh, then we'll be probably bringing something to the board at the next board meeting to, for consideration on some code enforcement, not necessarily changes in the code enforcement itself, but in our, how we, how we go, how we, I guess, execute it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. General counsel? Uh, I'm sorry, uh, general manager?
Good morning, Supervisors. Uh, I'd like to give a few updates on our, uh, projects for 2019. Uh, Earl and I talked about the Deer Run pump station. The design is completed by Mr. Altum, and we're hoping that we advertise the bid very soon on those, um, those electrical upgrades for Deer Run. The Greensloops, we're anticipating that project to happen during the summertime, spring summer, is that correct, with the Greensloops?
Mayish.
Mayish, okay. So, uh, we don't have any information from Mr. Altum just yet, but we're, we're on track for those projects. The next recreational parks and advisory committee meeting will be held on November 29th, and Ariel and I will be preparing a funding application for the bocce and shuffle board. Uh, currently, our budget is 235,000 in our, in the current budget, and, uh, of course, the project is contingent upon funding with RPAC. So I just received word, I believe yesterday, that the meeting is November 29th, okay? Unit 2 drainage, the vendor is still laying the sod out there, so it should be finished by next week, is that right?
We hope, yes.
We hope? We hope?
Well, it's tough getting some of the materials, but it's, uh, David's doing a very good job, so...
We're getting, we're, we're finally getting there after all the, the last couple of years, so I'm very happy with the progress.
All right, thanks, Michael.
As Supervisor Brooks and Ariel spoke earlier about the marketing and website scope of services, uh, myself and Ariel and Cliff will have another meeting on Tuesday or Monday, Monday, Tuesday next week, uh, to talk through that again, so we'll be bringing the board some information very soon. Uh, Polston Engineering is working on the bid specs for the current year drainage projects, as we mentioned. In your Phase 3 drainage plan, there are 11 projects listed, and nine of those will be included in one bid. So it's a, it's a very, uh, very, um, comprehensive project, and he should have those, the bid specs done within the next, um, probably six weeks or so? The water plant electrical upgrades have finally begun. Uh, we're looking at a final completion schedule for end of December. Uh, the biggest hurdle in this project is getting the, the parts, and there is so many pieces to this project. Um, I'm gonna be asking the project manager, Jim Orr, to give us an update at the December meeting of where we are with that project, so, um, this, we're on, this is probably the second or third year that we've, I know we've gone down this road, but we're finally seeing some, some progress with the water plant. Thank you.
A quick question on the, uh, the drainage projects, I don't know if Drew, you said nine of the 11 would be under a single, under one bid? Just out of curiosity, why would we be, why would there be nine projects under one bid? Are they all contingent upon one another, or...
They, they are not related to each other, but they're all related because of drainage, so one contractor is usually, not only is it from a timing perspective, but more a cost-efficient approach to include, I mean, when you have a $15,000 project, and then a 20, and then a 50, and you try to individually get quotes and bids on, on those, it's just more efficient to put all one.
Economies of scale say it's the way to go.
Yes.
I get it, I was just, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes.
Because I don't remember all of the numbers off the top of my head, I didn't know if there was $65,000 a project and $20,000 a project or 50.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I know we have a significant amount of drainage projects.
So when you look in your Phase 3 booklet that Drew provided you, the very last two pages has each project listed, one through 11, and it's prioritized, one through 11?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Unfinished, unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
Uh, Tom Coste, again, I got a couple of questions. Um, change orders. Uh, the comment was made that, uh, the general manager has the ability to place orders up to $10,000 without, uh, coming to the board. Um, if we're dealing with a $200,000 project, does that mean that the general manager can make that a $210,000 project without coming to the board for permission?
Has to be under $10,000.
The addition?
Must be under $10,000, yes.
Okay, can, can the general manager come once a month for 12 months and add $120,000 to a project simply by placing a $10,000 increase on the project? Is that possible, the way our policy manual is written?
I'd have to research that, Tom.
Research it?
I said I would have to research that, I...
Well, it either says one, or it says anytime. Okay, you'll get back to me with that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, another question, with regard to records retention. It's coming, it come up, uh, in a couple of instances where the district has been unable to find, uh, records of pro, of projects or of, of, uh, situations that we found ourselves in, in, in recent years, and I would consider recent, anything within the last 10 years. Do we have a, uh, a formal policy with regard to destruction of records, district records? Is there a formal written policy on that?
We follow the minimum requirements of the state of Florida, and I do...
Your mic isn't working.
Can you hear me?
No.
It always happens when I get to talk. How about now, is that...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we do follow the minimum requirements of the state of Florida, um, and that is our policy, so depending on the content of the document is where it falls in the retention requirement. So, for instance, if I have an administrative correspondence, it's gonna fall under three fiscal years.
Okay, those, uh, as you read through that law, uh, many times as you read through it, it, it points out in bold print that these are minimum requirements.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's up, left up to the discretion of the agency to decide whether or not we need to keep certain documents longer.
We are required to keep it by that minimum. There are times where we keep it longer.
Do we have a policy on what we decide to keep and what we decide to destroy, or do we simply destroy records?
No, we simply follow the state of Florida's requirements.
The minimum?
The minimum.
Is that our policy? Once it hits the minimum, we throw it away?
Well, it, it depends.
Tom?
Yeah?
We don't have a formal written board adopted policy for all the requirements that she's talking about, since the minimums are already given to us, uh, we, we follow, we definitely follow minimums.
Oh, so who, who sets, who makes the decision about what's kept, and do we have a, a public records, um...
I'm the public records.
You're the one that decides what gets thrown out and what doesn't?
Yes, sir, and I do keep very tidy records if you want to inspect them to see what's been thrown out, what's...
No, I just found it, I found it strange that we didn't keep the records on how the, um, the charges, uh, took place the last time we had the county tax collector...
I don't remember you requesting that.
I'm sorry?
I don't remember you requesting that of me.
No, I didn't request it, but I, I've heard that we did not keep the records, was it a meeting?
You're always welcome to ask me.
Tom, I, I think she's willing to open up her books to you if you wanna go in there and see what she has retained.
Okay, I, I would like to see whatever we've got in the way of a policy on destruction of public records.
Okay.
Um, couple of other questions. Hopefully you'll allow me a little extra time.
I will allow you a little extra time, but, once again, it, it is three minutes with a two-minute extension.
Um, keep in mind that, uh, the public are the people that pay the bills here, and while I understand that we have had a policy in recent years of blowing the whistle on the three-minute deal, it didn't used to happen that way. We are the ones that pay the bill.
Totally agree.
And you're talking about our money whenever you're spending money here, so I would think that we would...
I don't make the rules.
Uh, you guys did make the rules, the board did make the rules.
Previous board.
I guess that what I might, my point is that the rules have always been in place with regard to the three minutes, the, the board didn't use to...
I think we adopt them after the Highlands County Commissioners, do we not? Yes, no? Do we not follow Highlands County Commissioners meetings, pretty much?
Actually, I think it's our own, I think we have our own ability to make our own rules according to Highlands County.
All I'm saying is I think we follow those types.
What happened to the retirement program? What's the status on the retirement program issue that was on the agenda, which evidently was taken off?
What, the committee?
Separate, separate, uh, separate meeting, the House of Representatives.
Well, that's a, that's not gonna, that wasn't on the agenda for, okay.
No.
Okay. Um, I guess that's all for now, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Any other further public comment?
Yes. Bill Norcross, uh, resident. Uh, I'm always concerned about income and expenses like anybody else, and, uh, recently there was a newspaper article by the president, um, that, uh, mentioned the golf course should be self-sufficient. Well, I'm kinda bothered about that, what does that mean, that we have to raise our rates to, um, pay the bills, or can we, uh, give money some other way? 'Cause we only have two, excuse me, two income, uh, revenue streams, that you have your water bills or membership money. So, you know, in a, in a meeting in August 31st, in a, uh, in a workshop, the, the golf budget was, uh, $3,599,000 and whatever. Golf assessment was $330,000. Billy Casper's group has asked for capital improvements of $314,000. That gives us a total of $644,000 and change. Well, my question is, if you have a budget of $3,599,000 and have expenses of $600,000, that means there's a difference of, uh, $2,955,000 and change, whatever it is. And I, and it's kind of like, what is hidden here is that the budget was $3 million, and your expenses are six, and then there's $2 million, uh, million dollars left over. So what I wanna do is I wanna, uh, submit to Omar, and maybe he could answer a question, because it's cold turkey for you guys, I understand that. But I mean, uh, trying to understand the capital improvements, the expenses, and your income, it's important, but it seems to be a difference between the budget and income. So I am very concerned about it, uh, maybe it can be explained when Omar has the chance to do that, but being self-sufficient, does that mean we're gonna eliminate the assessment? I don't think so. I don't think anybody would agree. But, you know, this is part of recreation, and it's important for the golf course to maintain its status and its, uh, right now, under, uh, Cliff's expertise and the greenskeeper, we have a very good product here, and it's only gonna get better. So I just don't want the, a tremendous expense to be levied on membership or the general public. The general public has something to do with keeping property values up, everybody knows that, and we're not stupid, they got it, so. I just wanna submit the questions on the financial statements to, uh, Omar, and hopefully I can get a resolution. Thank you.
I will make a comment to that, as I always do. I think, it's kind of interesting, because somebody else came to me, and I don't know where you, you know, somebody obviously you were talking to said the same, almost word for word. When I stated self-sufficient, I was basing it off of a number of things, and one of them being global golf's recommendations, and as in any business, whether you wanna call us a business or not, you have expenses and you have revenues. All I was trying to say is at some point in time, it would be nice if the golf course could be self-sufficient, in other words, generate enough revenue to cover their cost. Now, will that happen in my lifetime? Probably not, but to have an unbalanced budget year after year after year doesn't make a lot of sense. We should at least strive for a goal to have them be a break-even point. That's all I was essentially saying. Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna raise assessments, it doesn't mean we're gonna raise other water, we will continue to do assessments as far as, I mean, uh, assessments to the, the golf operations when necessary, but if they come in at $600,000 in assessments, why can't they decide to put a budget together for something less than that $600,000 in additional assessments? That's essentially what I was trying to say. Now, it might not come across that way, and I apologize if it didn't, but all we're trying to say is, or all I'm trying to say is, at that time, it would be nice if we could balance our budget.
Well, it'd be nice, and I think Cliff has emphasized that we've had a 2% to 3% increase in membership, and the outside play is really going berserk. Very, very busy, because we can see it, because just the golf carts parked in the, in the cart barn, and the, uh, and the use of, and the turnover and that sort of thing like that. But I'm just concerned about the assessment that's given to the golf courses, part of the recreation, it does not disappear. Thank you.
Thank you. Still doesn't get it. Any further public comment? Discussion to and from the, uh, the board. Michael? No? Oh, I thought, Dan? No? No? Yeah, okay, go ahead, please.
I, I have this suggestion, I don't know how this will fly with everybody, but we always hear that the board here represents the people in the district, so what we've never done, when we, when we look at all these capitals, uh, expenditures that we're talking about, the possibility of a district, remodeling the district office, upgrading the recreation facility, the equipment room over there, maybe putting a swimming pool in, spending lots of money on the golf course, uh, doing shuffleboard courts, you know, bocce courts, that type of thing, we never really asked anybody except for ourselves what they think about it. Perhaps we should send out a survey to all residents and say, what do you all think? This is what we're thinking of doing with your money, what do you all think about it? And, and word it in such a way that we can get a response and gauge it. I would feel much better voting for anything if the people say they like the idea and wanna do it. If they came back and said they don't, they hate the idea, and it was like a 1% favorable vote, I probably would vote against it. Just an idea, I know we're late on this, and I understand that, but we haven't necessarily spent a nickel yet, we're just planning on it, and perhaps we should ask everybody what they think.
Any other further board discussion? Meeting's adjourned.